And on call is October 10th, the City Council meeting to order. Is there any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, I'd like to add private sewer connections under sewer. I thought we could talk about under the sewer rate increase.
So you're gonna have like an F1 there?
Yes, and they'll be quick.
Private sewer connections. Any other agendas? Any other amendments to the agenda? If not, we're gonna go right to our visitors. And we'd like to welcome Samantha Dunn from Housing Vermont Community Development, Block Grant, to talk about Armory Lane Housing Project.
And I'm also here with Elise Chanbacker. I'm with the Addison County Community Trust. I think last time I was here talking about the sidewalk extension out to McKnight Lane.
So we're here because Housing Vermont and Addison County Community Trust, we call ACCT, so you don't have to say all those words, are partnering to develop a parcel of land that Housing Vermont owns on Armory Lane that was subdivided, I think, back in 2009. As folks know, we, the two organizations partnered in 2012 to build the Armory Lane senior housing. And we are now exploring the feasibility of developing a second multifamily building on lot number two. It's called, sort of right across Armory Lane from the senior housing facility. And we're looking at 20 to 25 units of mixed income housing. We're excited. I don't know if folks are aware of the housing bond that passed at the state level allows us to really provide more mixed income housing as opposed to limiting the housing to the lower income where we've been restricted to in the past. So we're hoping this project will allow us to take advantage of those funds. And 25 percent of the units would be for folks making up to 120 percent of the median income. That's what that housing bond allows for. And in Vergens, for a single person, that's about $62,000 of income, or $90,000 for a family of four would be the maximum. So regular working families, which most of our housing serves anyway. We know there's a lot of demand for this housing. ACCT has a waiting list for the senior housing with, I think, 67 different households on it that we know we could serve a lot of those folks right across the street, allowing them to access some of the same services in the same location. And then there's additional 87 households on their waiting list, just families, single people, all different ages, looking for housing. And reports tell us that the rental vacancy rate in Addison County is right around 1% between 1 and 2 percent. So that's really low. There's, people are really looking for housing. So we're excited about this project and having the opportunity to build it. One piece is that we really need to access funds available through the CDVG program to be able to bring it all together. Construction costs are really high. We need to sort of access all the funding sources that we can. And we know that in 2007, I believe, the city passed a resolution saying they wouldn't consider using CDVG funds. And I think then made an exception for the senior housing. So we are back to ask if this council would consider doing away with that resolution. I think it wouldn't, it wouldn't impede the city at all being able to weigh in on a specific project. Obviously, any application the city needs to support. But right now, with that resolution, we know we don't even have a chance of accessing those funds. So we wanted to come and talk to folks about that and hopefully answer any questions that you might have or could anything to add.
Yeah, happy to, you know, answer any questions about Addison County Community Trust and our other properties. I think, I don't wanna, you know, folks probably remember from last time, so I'll just field questions if you have any.
We're very anxious to see a second housing unit for seniors to come to town. And I hear a lot about that. So anybody have any questions?
Can you tell me what, can you tell us the history behind that resolution?
I'd love to, but I wasn't city manager at the time, so Rennie, I certainly know about, I certainly can talk about taxation. I know how taxation works. And so, but Rennie, Mike was mayor at this time. Nobody else, right? I'm reading the bottom of the, they have a copy of the resolution, Samantha. So Rennie, you know, Rennie was city manager at the time, so I can't, other than I understand this, I understand this resolution, I will, I will just tell you that, you know, whereas the change in taxation, you know, has adversely affected the amount of tax revenue Vergens may receive from these units. And if I understand, read this thing earlier, it was like until the law changed is what is, I believe, what this was saying, all right? But Rennie can give, you know, might be able to shed some light on what prompted this.
Well, what I can remember, and the reaction with the council at the time was pretty strong, actually, being against a project. And I had worked with Housing Vermont for quite a, quite a while, actually, to develop the preliminary plans for building out that whole area. And I think the reaction was a couple of things. One, taking more taxable property off the tax rolls. And the other part was, the feeling was that the city already had its more than fair share of, at that time, was considered low-income housing. And, and we knew at the time that there was a demand for senior housing. There probably was a demand for low-income housing at the time also. But the combination of the tax deduction and the, that we had so many units already in the city that we felt, I don't, I shouldn't say we, because I was only the city manager. I didn't, I don't make any of these decisions at then. But the, it was felt that it was enough, basically. I don't think there was much to it. Do you remember much more than that, Mike?
No, I think it was the general feeling of the council at that point, that Rennie said that our tax rates were, that the citizens were bearing the burden of allowing more lower-income individuals to come into the community where it was, it was just causing us a hardship. We were having a lot of, there was Ocag and other buildings in the city that we were not getting taxation on that at the point, so it was.
Yeah, and I would just, I think there's some confusion when people hear this at first. These parcels aren't removed from the tax rolls. They have just a different way of assessing the property tax rate on them. So we, at Housing Vermont, just did a quick look, and it looks like for the properties that Housing Vermont, ACCT owned together, and Vergens, we paid about $100,000 last year in property taxes. So while it's a different way of determining the value of the property for taxation, they're not removed from the, from the tax rolls.
And in this particular instance, we're talking about new construction, so a parcel that is currently on the grant list for about $130,000, you know, you might see that go up to almost a million dollars. Right.
And what would we be able to get tax?
So looking down the, taking the taxes our properties paid in Vergens in 2016 divided by their valuation, it was just over 2%.
Yeah, and I think what that means, and I'm just looking over Elise's shoulder, in 2016, we paid $3,000 in taxes on lot two, on Armory Lane, undeveloped parcel. And when we're estimating what we're gonna be paying once the building is up and running, it's around $19,000 or $20,000 annually. And for that parcel, because we own it, you know, it's either gonna be three years, it's gonna be 20, but there, you know, that's, you know, I think it's gonna sit, or hopefully it's gonna get developed. And we think we have a really great project to develop there, and again, opportunity to house a lot of those seniors that are wait, on the waitlist for Armory Lane.
And we're excited to be partnering with Vermont Integrated Architecture on the architecture as well. And so I think it'll be a really nice addition to that area back there on Armory Lane.
Just a question to Mel. So this new way of, I guess, new way of taxation, it's kind of a formula thing, I believe. Is this the same formula thing that we have had several appeals?
Well, we, we, you've only had one, you've only had one appeal. You know, I'm trying to think of how many, you know, how many, I think that there, let's just say that I could do a, I could run a report off the grant list of how many properties have a rental housing subsidy covenant, all right? And I think that there's 10. I don't think, I don't think I'm too far off in that number. First off, how the, how the system works is that you, we value property based on, based on construction, less depreciation, we place a value on it. And I can tell you that under the law, any, any, any property that has a rental housing subsidy covenant, we are supposed to be calculating that value based on the income approach, of which most of you are familiar with, given the appeal by BB2. Now, I can tell you, there's, we have some properties in town that have a rental housing subsidy covenant, but they, they don't supply us with the income and expense information to be able to value those properties in that manner. And, you know, they really, they really should, or we should be soliciting. I don't know who the, who the burden is on, whether or not it's the board of listers should be reaching out to people to get information so that we can properly calculate their taxes, or whether or not the property owner should be mailing us that information on an annual basis so that the listers can calculate the value. But let me just tell you, right now, there's only two or three that I know of that we run this calcu, that we, that the value is based on that calculation. And so it's a, it's a spreadsheet that you've all, you've all seen. It's based on the revenue less the expenses. And you use a cap rate and you, it calculates a value. On top of that, I will, I will tell you that any property that has a rental, that has a rental housing subsidy covenant, they also get a discount of 10% off from their education taxes, just the way that the system works. I won't, I won't bore you with all that. I guess the thing, you know, I'm in a little bit of a difficult spot because I'm sitting next to the mayor who signed a resolution in 2007, sitting next to a city manager that was here in 2007, and six other people sitting on this board. I really think that there's a problem with the law, all right? And, but I don't know that the resolution, in all due respect, I think that this resolution is taking a sledgehammer to a, to a problem. I just, I'm not so sure that this is the way I would have, I know, I know Rennie, I can tell that you had a hand in writing this, but you, people like you and I, when we're city manager, we just do what we're told. And we make it look pretty and put it in front of you, and this is what you wanted, and you signed it, all right? So one of the things, I guess, you know, I can, you know, it speaks about, you know, provide more housing and additional property tax expense to the taxpayers. There isn't any expense going on here. We're talking about new money, is what we're talking about. And I can tell you that houses in Vermont, the legislature passed a law that if you have a property that has a rental housing subsidy covenant, then though, there is a methodology of how you calculate that value. And when you, when you depress the rents from, when you value a piece of property using market rents compared to contracted rents, of course, the revenue stream is gonna be different. That's the, that's the deal. Your expenses, we can have a lot of debate about whether or not reserve funds are legitimate or not, but the bottom line is, is that if, when you run those calculations, you will come up with a lesser value than you would if it did not have those subsidy covenants, all right? It is absolutely discounted because the revenue stream has been forced lower. That's the deal. The other thing, I was reading through this a little bit, trying to figure out, because there's another, there is also another reduction that occurs out there. I think we have, Joan, maybe another 10 or 12 single-family homes that are owner-occupied, or by an eligible entity, like Addison County Community Trust, owns 25% of the, or a share of the value of the home. And, and I won't bore you with the complications of how that works over time, but basically, it allows someone to purchase a home that they couldn't normally purchase because they, with conventional financing. And so you're able to buy a home that the, let's say you start out with 25% of the home is funded through an agency, and they really own, they do own 25% of the home, and the owner owns 75% of the home. And then as time goes by and the value of that property increases, the percentages switch, whereby the owner, the owner only gets 25% of the increase in value, and the equity shareholder of 25 gets 75% of the shareholder. Those properties, we, we discount, the law requires us, requires us to discount those properties 25 to 30% of the value. We, just because I do have a hand in this, we discount them 25%. We don't discount them 30. We discount 25. So, so those properties, you know, had they not had that restrictive covenant, there's no question there, they, if they didn't have it, we would collect more money, all right, on a single-family home. I think this is, you know, I'm trying to find the word rental, all right? And affordable housing units with restrictive covenants on rental or sale revenue have the benefit of paying reduced property taxes. You know, you know, I don't, I don't know, the word reduced is right. There's a different methodology. The other thing is that really provide more housing and additional property tax expense to the city. The city's not spending, the city's not spending any money. So what I wonder is, here we are in 2017, there's, resolutions are written, passed, they're in the records, that's the law of the land until Joan or I are told otherwise. If the city council, if there's a majority of the city council that wants to, to declare that, rescind, rescind that resolution, it's a, it's a motion, a second, and the vote is there, and there it is.
Well, I probably had a hand in writing this, and it was probably based on whatever the law was at that time. And I'm not sure that the law was the same then as it was now, or is now. I mean, from a personal basis, I, I was city manager, as Mel said. The city manager does what the city council wants him to do. And personally, I was surprised at, at the reaction and this resolution, quite frankly, because I had worked with Housing Vermont for several years to get to the point of having plans to develop that property, to have it go down in flames. So it was kind of a surprise to me at the time. So if I express my personal feeling about it now, despite the fact that it, there is less property tax, we will get money still that we don't have, have now. The way that property is tied up and less Housing Vermont just waits for a long time and finally gives up and says, we'll sell it openly to anybody who wants to buy it, that's not their way of doing things, is that it'll just sit there not earning anything, or very little, compared to what it should be earning. And we need the housing. We do have more than our proportionate share of what people might term low-income housing. We have lots of units for the size of the city. But I don't know what, what you may consider to be too much. The property is there, the plans are there, there are the people who need the housing. And under the new laws and so on, with the mixed income, there's a whole different mixture of incomes, the folks who would be in there. I personally don't see any reason why we shouldn't rescind that resolution, or maybe we don't even have to rescind the resolution. If we, if we endorse the Block Grant application, then we've rescinded the, we've rescinded the resolution, because we've taken the action necessary to move the project forward. So that's my opinion.
I totally agree that we need elderly housing. There's so many people waiting, and it's really difficult when they've sold their home and they have nowhere to go. And unfortunately, I have two clients on waiting lists. So I would move that we rescind the resolution and move forward with a Block Grant approval.
I have a motion, and Mole has a second. And just, you know, 10 years ago, the thought process was one-way and maybe corrected that time, but I think I got enough tire tracks on my back right now, so.
So we haven't got to that item on the agenda, I don't think, but I don't know.
So, oops, wait. We would ask that when you hold that, until we get into the business section, Mole, would you mind holding until we get into this section?
I can.
So one of the takeaways here is, you know, is you've heard about elderly housing, and I don't know how, you know, how your application can be structured or whatever.
I think we actually just came out of a meeting where we talked about doing a survey of folks on the waiting list and in the existing senior housing to ask them about what types of design amenities are important to them. We've already determined that that building will be a single building, so it can have an elevator, you know? And then there are other features, like a roll-in shower and things like that. So we, we know that, we want to house those people as well. So we're, we've already started that process. We're in just schematic design of the building, but making sure that this building can serve as many of those folks that are on, on the waiting list for the senior housing as possible through, through the design of the building.
But just to be clear, this would be a multi-generational building?
Right, it won't be age-restricted, but it could be.
Is it gonna be the, can you tell us the proportion? How much senior, how much?
So within, so actually, I'll back up a little. The reason, well, there's a couple, the reason is just sort of twofold why we're going unage-restricted. One, Rennie kind of alluded to, there really is still, in our market studies, we're still finding a lot of family housing demand in addition to the senior demand. And then secondly, the way that the, so the largest source of equity for this project will be the low-income housing tax credits, which are allocated by the Vermont Housing Finance Agency. And the way that they allocate tax credits makes it, they restrict the amount of money that they'll get, dole out for senior projects, and it just makes it very, very hard to get that funding for an age-restricted project right now. The way that Armory Lane was done, we had access to what are called HUD 202 funds, which are specifically for senior housing. What has since happened, that, that provides capital and operating subsidy for the property. And what's happened with that program is it still exists, but it's been either level-funded or cut so that they can continue to fund the operating subsidies that are already in existence, like the ones at Armory Lane. But they aren't providing any new money to build new senior housing with that program. So it was a combination of what funding is available to us and where the demand is. But like Samantha said, when we're having these design meetings, we really want to make sure that we can serve those folks on the Armory Lane waitlist. It is our longest waitlist. So we don't have final proportions for what the, we can't restrict the proportions.
We can't restrict units to age.
Right. But in terms of what the, the, like, bedroom size mix will be, we don't have the final numbers, but we're looking at predominantly one bedrooms, next, a number of two bedrooms, and maybe one three-bedroom unit. So to those smaller households, looking at those features that are attractive to folks on the Armory Lane waitlist and to the folks who already live in senior housing. So, you know, a number of ADA-accessible units, even some of the one bedrooms or even two bedrooms that aren't ADA-accessible will have features like the roll-in showers. They'll actually all be fully adaptable, so that if somebody is in a unit that, for example, isn't an ADA unit, but they need grab bars, the blocking will already be in there in the showers. So just making it very friendly for serving that whole spectrum of populations. And then we hope too, with the availability of SASH right across the street, that it'll draw some people in that way too.
Are you forced to have a certain number of three-bedrooms?
No. No. We just have very, very few in our portfolio currently. We manage about 240 units, about 100 of those are here in Vergens. And I don't know that, oh, two, well, no, those are, well, technically, those are in Waltham. We've got two three-bedrooms at McKnight Lane, and I'm trying to think of other three-bedrooms in Vergens. I know where they are in Middlebury and Bristol, but I actually don't even think we have, well, swear to it, but fewer than what you can count on one hand in terms of three bedrooms we have.
You know, when the, when the senior housing project was, was finally built, the 25 units, I, I think that I emailed Matt Moore at Housing Vermont every six months, and called Terry McKnight every, every month to say, okay, you got the 25, let's, let's go with another 25. Because in my mind, you know, a senior housing of 25 units and then 25 more, and maybe 25 more, and because people literally die on the list, all right? So one of the, why I was asking about the, the three-bedroom is that really, I know that the rents are different, whether or not it's a one-bedroom, or a two-bedroom, or a three-bedroom. And senior, a senior, there has to be some reason for them. So my, my point is, is that if you've got this list, you know, I would suggest that you build to that list, and that's about as good as we can get. Because I understand that.
We do have, we do have some folks who need a three-bedroom on our other list, waiting for housing in Vergens, not on the Armory list.
Okay.
All righty. Any other discussion that needs to have? I think we know where this is headed.
One question for Mel. Is there a way that if this goes forward, we can somehow incorporate language that will clarify issues that will not go to appeal again? So that we know, both sides know exactly what's gonna be looked at and how it's gonna be counted, and that that is crystal clear from the get-go?
Well, well, first off, the, the entity that appealed has a different management than, than Housing.
I realize, I just mean, just so that, you know, I don't. They were looking at one formula. We thought the formula should be a different one.
Yeah.
And so there were two, two meetings, or two minds trying to meet. And it would be nice, before this even starts, like, this is it, do we agree? Yes, we agree. Okay, that's our definition.
We probably already agree, though.
I don't, you know, I, I don't know that we've recalculated the senior housing since the first calculation, to be honest with you. I don't think there's been that exchange. In theory, the way the statute reads, you calculate it every, you calculate it every year, and it, and it goes like this. Some towns say, listen, let's just hit a number and run with it. But the statute begs, begs you to, you run the calculation. What you're talking about is the reserve fund, and I, I, I don't know, you know, I don't know how, you know, I, I know where you're getting at. You're, you're trying to drive that point home.
But before we do that, before we do that, we need to get back on point here, because we're starting to talk more about semantics, since that, and that is a different subject altogether.
Food for thought.
Rather than belabor this, if it's an issue that needs to come in front of the council, that should be put on the agenda in itself. So rather than try to solve a problem that we can't at this point, let's, let's move on to, if anybody else has any questions, please direct them, and we'll try to keep moving here. If none, ladies, thank you very much for coming. If you want to hang around for a few seconds, we have some other business that we need to attend to, but we'll be right up in just a few seconds. Ask for a motion for a minute.
Make a motion for the minutes from the last meeting.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Mole made a motion, Rennie made the second. Any emissions, corrections, or errors? Hearing none, all is open.
No.
Just a chance.
And I have one or two.
Page one, under warrant, second line, Alderman Chabot recommended that members Page one, under warrant, second line, Alderman Sheba recommended that members conduct their due diligence rather than its due diligence. That was all I have.
Okay.
Ready? Okay, if you go to page two, quite a few lines down, it's a sentence that starts with, "One needs to consider that under this plan, all vehicles would be required to drive south." On this, it says potion, but it says portion of North Street.
Bullshit.
And the other, only other place that I have a change is on the very last page, under comments, and just need to change it up a little bit. The comments say, "Senior Alderman Perry reported Virgens Partnership is sponsoring the first Eat on the Green event." And I'd like to change that, because even though everybody thought we were the sponsor, it really, we weren't really, even though we're the physical agent and much of the planner, but we're not the sponsor. So, it probably should read, "Senior Alderman Perry reported that the first Eat on the Green," striking Virgens Partnership is sponsoring. Put that in there instead. That the first Eat on the Green event is, is on, or will be, either one.
Okay.
And that would be it. That would clarify.
Because the four, the four nonprofits are down below there, right?
What's that?
The four nonprofits are listed below.
Yes, they're listed, yes.
Any other corrections or errors? If not, all those in favor, as the corrections were made, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? So, carry. And now, to citizens' comments. Are there anyone in the audience that want to make some comments on items that are not on the agenda? And for those that don't know what is on the agenda, community development block grant resolution, A. Number B, donation to Front Porch Forum. C is donations to Green Up Vermont. D, select Green Up Day Coordinator. Thank you, Lowell. E, local option tax. F, sewer rate increase. And F1, private sewer connections. G, sandwich boards and temporary signs. And six is city manager report. He's going to do the 2018 budget report, reserving dock space, traffic study, municipal program, any grant, other topics of interest. And the stuff that I have is truck traffic through Virgens, and that's about the meeting we had today, and pumpkins in the park, and the next meeting date, of course, of journey. So, anybody else, yes?
I just came tonight because I did notice that no update on the pool caulking was on, and I'm just curious if we have any further information about that.
We'll entertain that question right here, right now, and I'll have you.
Sure. The, I do not have anything to put in front of the city council tonight, but I had, I did meet with Mike from P's Construction Services last week, and they have totally inspected, taken pictures of the entire pool, all of the cracks, and he needed to report that back to his boss so that we could get a quote from them. NICOM is the other company that I've been in touch with. They have not gone to the pool yet, and they are swamped with work. NICOM is the company that recently did the repairs to both ends of the bridge. So, I do not have numbers for you. I would love to be able to bring you numbers ASAP, so that this work can be done in this season, because we are going to run out of this weather here rather quickly.
So, the, there is no good answer to your question, but an update. Does that, do you have any other comments, Michelle? Okay, yes, ma'am.
Can I follow up? I, I'm Sarah Stroff, I live across the street. I have been unable to come to the city council meeting since June, but I've been looking at the minutes and seeing some comments about kind of low citizen participation and attendance at city council meetings. And I'll be frank, I, I think it's, having come to city council meetings and tried to, trying to speak up on things like investing in the pool, and then not hearing like my concerns are being heard is frustrating. It seems to dishonor the major volunteer effort that a lot of people in our community have put into the pool. So, I know, I'm sympathetic that you all are often told that you never move fast enough for the citizens in your community. I know that this stuff takes time. But in terms of investing in caulking the expansion joints and putting a line item in the general budget, it, I feel like coming to city council meetings over the past five or six months, I've heard claims that those things will be done. And I would just like to respectfully ask that they are done, that our city council protect this existing recreational facility that we have by committing funds to something that many of our community members have committed time to.
Thank you for your comments.
Can I say, I'm sorry.
Sure, you may.
Totally separate and much more optimistic, I would say, which is, I wanted to thank the members of our community, and particularly Joan Devine, for responding to some of my concerns. The event on the City Green, Eat on the Green, the other night was really wonderful, but a friend of mine who does not live in Virgens, her, had an incident where her nine-year-old daughter was attacked by a dog on the green and was taken to Porter in an ambulance, and she is okay, but will be scarred on her face. And it was a very scary incident. Thank you, Joan, for answering my many questions that I had after that incident. I'm grateful that we do have military, military, medical personnel there to deal with those sorts of things, and that Joan and you all know kind of the rules about this. I will ask that, I don't know if the city council can do anything about this legally, but if we can encourage members of our community to leave their pets at home during big events like the Memorial Day Parade, the Eat on the Green event, the Virgens Day, that's a very small space, that's very busy and quite stressful, even for almost 40-year-old adults chasing after their children. So, if it's possible to encourage members of our community to not bring their pets into a very stressful environment, I, it might make accidents like that less likely in the future.
Thank you.
Can I, can I?
Yes.
I'm going to work backwards here, because I want to get back to the pool. So, first off, relative to dogs in a park, you know, really deals with our city ordinance. Our ordinance currently, you know, we do not ban dogs from the City Green. However, it would be my opinion that when the city, like, under our City Green policy, Joan, I think you might agree with me, when somebody reserves the park, all right, for an event, that entity, we, they would make their own rules about whether or not they would allow dogs or whatever. We wouldn't necessarily, we wouldn't necessarily micromanage that aspect. However, if, if the, if the City Green policy that the city council adopted said that during events, no dog, I mean, so the city council can be in control of that through the City Green use policy, or we're not in control and it's left with whoever the entity is that has reserved the park, all right? For that, swimming pool. At one of the meetings, I'm glad you read these, I'm glad you read these minutes. You have no idea how much time Joan and I spend on these, on these minutes. So, I'm glad you're reading them. So, one of the things that's nice about the pool is, either the last meeting or the meeting before, I gave an updated report on the, on the pool budget, and it was the first time as long as the city's owned the pool, which is 2010, that we ended the year with, you know, $14,000 surplus. So, that's a, that's a nice thing. So, that's fine. Relative to, and, and we're getting these quotes, I will tell you, tell you that, as I know Michelle knows, I don't know how much you know, Sarah, but one of the things that we, we ran into this year is that the fabric that covers the panels, the discs in the, in the filter, that those fabric covers over the plastic discs showed evidence of failure this year, and that's why there was a lot of DE that accumulated in the deep end. And so, it's crystal clear that the, those fabric covers are beyond their life, and Rick is procuring replacement fabric covers. They're, they're, whatever, 30 bucks a piece, they're, I don't know how many discs there are, Michelle, I don't know.
64.
54, thank you.
64.
64 discs times, you knew the math, okay? So, we got a couple thousand dollars worth. And Rick is actually going to take all of that apart this fall, bring it down to the treatment plant, put up, buy the fabrics, and in their downtime, they'll put that fabric on. So, next year, there will be, there will be new fabric on there. So, that $2,000, you know, I don't really feel like the $14,000 is mine. I'm going to, I'm going to report to the city council some of the things that we're, some of the things that we're working on. And I really think that this caulking is not a $2,000 item. I think it's, I got to come to the city council with this one. Relative to allocating from the general fund, we do budgets in May, so we won't be, there was, maybe you, they talked about that, but we allocate money from the watershed fund. There currently is no allocation from the, from the general fund, if you will. And that's, that's a budget decision that the city council makes at the time that they're adopting the budget in May and June. So, anyway.
Just go ahead. Just a quick one on the dogs in the park. Having been integrally involved in the planning of that event, I didn't see the particular person who was bringing actually rescue dogs in to kind of promote rescuing dogs. I didn't see that person there. Had I saw them, I may have mentioned something to them and taken a risk that I, that we actually had the authority to say, you shouldn't be here, you didn't ask us for permission. So, after that, I talked with Mel, because I wanted to find out, well, you know, what can we do if we've got the park and we're doing this event? Is there any way that we can control this? Because had I seen it, or somebody else seen it, we probably would have said, you don't belong here. And Mel said, just what he just said, is that once you have that event, that you have control of the park. And so, with that in mind, when we have our critique meeting next week about how we do this event next year, then we'll know that we'll be able to control those kinds of things. It certainly will be difficult to try and control not having people just come in with their dog. But we can certainly control people who might be doing something for rescue dogs or something else that shouldn't be there because of either the safety issue or some other issue. So, it's good to know that we will be doing something about controlling that.
And I do know on Virgens Day, there's the kennel that brings in a bunch of dogs just so that the kids can get used to them, and they're, the dogs are all proper-tempered and can be manhandle. Didn't know any restrictions, and with both, my granddaughter brought her dog, and that dog got licky to death, but that's only hard to love or do to you. But, you know, I mean, it's unfortunate. And Abigail works at the kennel, and she was named, she was dogging by name and introducing the owners, and so it's, there's some pros and cons to those sort of things, so it's a hard call. Yep, understood.
I have two rescue dogs. I support the endeavors of those foster parents. I just think that those particular days in that small space are pretty stressful.
Yep, thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none. We're going to go right into business and the community development, block grant. When you need to report, repeat that idea, or Joan, did you get the?
I wrote it down.
You had the motion?
Yep.
Thank you, ladies. And you guys a second?
Yep, Lowell.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? So, carried? That is carried? Okay, we're going to move right on to donations to Front Porch Forum. Thank you, ladies, have a good evening.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll see you on November 2nd.
It's not before, yeah, thanks.
Okay, Joan, are you the instigator on this one?
Well, yes, I, I get it in my Front Porch Forum, soliciting anyone who uses it, requesting a donation to help support that availability. And I use it quite a bit, Front Porch Forum, and I think $100 is pretty minimal. Anything coming up, like when we have traffic, a traffic problem, I'll go out there, or a special meeting for something with the council, or don't forget to register your dogs. I mean, all things, if you would put an ad in the Addison Independent, people aren't going to read that like they read Front Porch Forum or Facebook. I also load stuff on our page on Facebook. But I would like to support Front Porch Forum, just so that it doesn't go away. I think it's a good tool for us.
I, too, use it for updates on Vermont Gas.
Yep.
And other announcements.
Yep.
So, I mean, it's a well-worth investment, so.
So, they, they don't require that you pay in auto-depost so many times?
No, no.
Not for, not for government?
No.
Because for the, for the partnership, because we use it quite often?
Even though you're a nonprofit?
We have, we have to actually pay.
Right.
For so many times that we can post.
Yeah, like you're allowed six free, and then over, you gotta start paying, yeah. No, I don't have that limitation.
Andy?
Just a comment, do they accept ads, is that correct?
Yes.
I think so.
Those have to be paid.
So, they're actually?
Yeah, they say they are for-profit business.
For-profit corporation business that accepts ads. I'm just curious, I find that a for-profit venture is asking for donations.
Yep.
But do?
I'm writing my email.
So, and, you know, newspaper websites could probably also be.
Yep.
So, so, do we need a motion?
If you want to donate to us.
Yeah, we don't feel that, Joan and I don't feel that we have the authority to write checks to for really non-government, you know, I mean, we have a line item in our, in the sewer department now for the Riverwatch program, we, that we probably would do, but I think we have given Front Porch, I think we have.
Yeah, we've done it before, yeah.
Hundred bucks.
So, is that what you want to do? So, I'll make the motion that we donate $100 to Front Porch Forum.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Lowell, seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
One question, first, Mr. Mayor. Joan, do we have the ability to post the upcoming agenda prior to city council meeting, like a link to our agenda?
On Front Porch Forum? Yep.
Is that something we would consider doing?
Yeah, we could dig on another item, which I remember to do, yeah.
Is it, is it actually a link?
Yeah, you can create a link.
Okay.
So that a link appears to someone, only has to click on it, rather than say, go to Virgens.
So, let me, let me, let me, so, let me just tell you how the system works, okay? So, I write the agenda for this meeting, I write the agenda sometime on Friday, I send it out to Mike, all right? Mike says, yeah, that's good, or move this around, whatever, send it back, but good. So, the agenda is done. Yeah, I post that on the city's website, all right? You know, either that day or Saturday morning, I have to post it within 48 hours of the meeting, and also post paper copies in three public places, okay? So, the link that you're referring to, all right, is, I mean, I certainly know how to use Front Porch Forum, but, you know, let us try this, okay? It's just like it's one more thing that we need to remember that has to be done on Friday before we leave, okay? Now, that link, Joan is going to send that to Front Porch Forum, that link, I'm going to give her the link, because she can figure out the link, okay? And I would assume that would be published, Front Porch Forum is the next day, two days?
Well, it's based on how many.
How many, how many?
Okay, that's what I, that's what I, so.
But it should be within a day to two days.
So, we will try. So we will try to remember to do this, 'cause I'm just kinda curious about, you know, make sure that it's just simple, all right? If it's just a matter of, you know, we'll, we'll give it a whirl. But I just wanna tell you, we, we're, we do this, you know, I mean, it's just the way that we do things. I'm a last minute guy.
There's not some value to providing the information to our community prior to a meeting?
Yeah, and, and all I'm, and basically, like if, depending if it pops right out there, you know, I mean, yeah, I mean, Mike and I, we could try to put the agenda together on Thursday so that it's, you know, out there, we could try it, but I, but generally we're...
You usually have to post by like about three-thirty, four o'clock at the latest.
About five-thirty, yeah.
And, and it usually comes out, some days it comes out at four-thirty, some days it comes, comes out at five-thirty, depending on how busy it is, but it's, it's all, it's all good. Let's give it a try. And, and, and people have been told many times, our people at home, that it's available on the website, they just have to go searching for it.
Yep.
It's already there, so, all right? So we have a motion to the second. We already passed on it?
Yeah, we did.
We did.
We have a vote.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so the ayes have it. Donation to Green Up Vermont, we've always done that in the past.
I'll make a motion to donate a hundred and fifty dollars.
How appropriate that you make the motion.
Right.
I'll second, I'll second the motion.
I might not make the next one.
I'm gonna say the next one. I'd be in conflict if it was. Okay, I'm gonna take Lowell's motion and Matt's as a second. Any discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? He did that, move fast. Selection, the Green Up Coordinator, did I have a volunteer named Lowell?
I moved Lowell.
Second. My third, my third Lowell.
Call the question.
Will you do it, Lowell? Sure. I will try to assist you again this year.
Who's got a second?
One of us. Matt?
Matt was third, I think.
Yeah.
Mark was second, Mark was second.
I wanna make sure, is it the same pay as last year?
It's gone up. I wouldn't mind a call. The pay double, per cent?
Zero does.
All those in favor of the motion of Lowell being Green Up Coordinator, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Be quiet. So carried. Thank you, Lowell. Thank you, thank you. Local option tax.
Then you can take care of it.
All right. I'm just gonna talk about one other little thing that kinda fell off the, the agenda this time because it's gonna be dealt with in a different manner, is the downtown basin master plan. It calls for things to be done. Where is the money coming from? That's the hard part. It's not budgeted anywhere. So here is an opportunity with, if we were to consider a local option tax, to use those sums for specific projects so that we didn't have to go out and start hitting taxes, raising people's taxes. That's one thought process, people, I mean, there are other reasons. There are some pros and cons. I've heard some discussion that it raises something about, raises something on our electric light bill and I didn't see, it does?
Well, you pay sales tax on your, on your light bill, sure.
Fuel?
Hmm?
And home fuel?
So, I mean, it, it does have some shortfall and, but there's some different options, right, Mel, as to how you approach this?
Well, what it is, you know, there, the way that the law reads is a municipality, you know, you know, it requires voter approval and it requires a charter, you have to go, you have to go to the legislature to get it approved, so it's not like you, you adopt this and it starts in a, in a week. But there, there are options that it can be sales and use or room and meals or both and the percentage can be up to one percent. And, you know, there's some spreadsheet, you know, there are some spreadsheets, some communities have, there's not a lot of communities that have done this, I wanna say twenty-five and some of them is only room and meals, some of them are only use and, but the lion's share of them are, are both. Colchester was the most recent town to adopt a, a local option tax and I don't, I don't know if it's sales and use and, and room and meals. We studied this back a number of, a number of years ago, I think after the, the community visit and in my mind, I think that it generated net of about a hundred thousand dollars is what it, what it was, but it was, you know, hit with some objection because it does, it's, you know, a lot of people think that, you know, sales and use tax, well, that's not gonna, that's not gonna, that's not me, I don't, I don't buy anything, okay? Well, it's not just what you, you know, go to the store and buy, it's, it's really a lot of things like your telephone bill, your, you know, there's a lot of other purchases that you make that become applicable to that and so, you know, but I, you know, it's, it's something a number of communities have, have done and, and it is a, either new money like in the case of Middlebury, their, their local option tax is absolutely dedicated to paying for that bridge bond and maybe there's been some discussion lately, Andy, of maybe using it for other, because I think it's generating more than they need for the bridge and so.
There's some discussion.
There's been some discussion about that, so.
Ready? Yes, we have actually discussed this several times. The first time was when I was manager and it was brought up, but at that time it really went down in flames fast because we weren't surrounded by communities that already had it, we were gonna be one of the first and the businesses felt that that would be a disadvantage to them, so it went by the wayside. Now, of course, we're basically surrounded by other communities that, that have the local option tax, so it's not, it's not as shocking. The, the last time that we studied this and we did quite a bit of study on this, got all the regulations, we got from the tax department an estimate of how much money we would possibly earn and so on. And what killed it at that time is that we spoke to several of our major industries and one of our major industries would be financially, fairly high amount of money financially impacted negatively. And so because of that, we, it kinda just fell by the wayside, that we weren't going to pursue it because it would be too much impact and we don't wanna, didn't wanna risk the, the thought that one of those industries might close or go someplace else. Now, I don't know whether that would be the situation now. I mean, I, I think it probably deserves some look at again to see whether that industry and other industries will, will be impacted negatively by it and see, no, it's maybe like good wine, only before its time, you know, never before its time. So maybe we should look at it again.
Yeah, we don't wanna do anything right up front, we do not wanna do anything that's gonna drive any businesses out of town. That's not the intent of this whole process. It's just that as a taxpayer, if we keep adding too many taxes and all these projects that need to, that we'd like to get done and they're not happening this year or in another year, but I mean, it's, it's just spread it over a period of time and if you can start chunking off, the, the pool right now needs a, a new roof, that, and I think once Mark took a tour on the roof to see how it was and got one point where he thought he was gonna go through, so.
I stopped touring.
He said, "I've had enough fun, I'm getting down here from here." So there's just, there's things like that that we haven't budgeted and reality's gonna take and kick us right, straight in the butt here pretty quick because there's some big, big ticketed items that need to be addressed and didn't know if this might be an opportunity to, you know, at least get some feelers out there, so I'm kinda looking to the council for guidance. Is this something we wanna at least consider and, and have some conversations with, you know, like Country Home Products and UTC, you know, United Technology and if there's some other ones in the area that you feel that we, we should have some conversations with? So, somebody wanna share some thoughts on that, please?
Got a question and a comment. We need to get voter approval, I mean, you need to get legislative approval, right? Is the legislative approval for a specific tax that we wanna run or just that we would be chartered to allow a sales option tax at all? It's like we're allowing, we're getting permission that would go on forever whether we use it or not and it's a one-time thing or are you going to the legislature to ask for a specific thing to go into effect?
I think, I, I don't know that answer, but I believe that you would, that you would, it would be enabling legislation to have room and, you know, if you, I think you've gotta be specific about whether or not it's sales and room and tax, room and meals and the percentage. I think you need to be, I think you need to be that specific. You're, you're wondering about?
I'm just wondering if we have it, if this is a tool that we might use someday and we would just have in our back pocket and that way we'd only have one step after that or whether it's always a two-step process where you have to get voter approval and then go to the legislature, this is what the voters have approved, do you approve also?
Okay, so, yeah, I don't know, I could, I would, you know, I would just reach out to Colchester and take a look at their, you know, I'd call up Dawn and say, or give them my, give them the information and see, you know, what they put in front of the voters and, and I know they had to go to the legislature and the reason why, you know, I, I know at the legislature, Colchester, the legislature started to say that they would only get, they would only get sixty percent of the, of the proceeds and not seventy, I mean, and because it's whatever the legislature ends up approving. So you're, you're wondering if this is something that we can, in essence, turn on and off?
Yeah, if there's a way just to say, do we, will you allow this municipality to have this option in the legislature, "Sure," and then it's just there, we may never use it, but it's there and it's one less thing to have to go forward and go through a hoop. Or it might be, "No, you need voter approval and then you tell us what the project is and then we'll consider it." And I don't know which, which way it is for the, the legislation approval.
Yeah, so you're, you're not talking about, 'cause I think in the case of Middlebury, their bridge project, that is very specific, that's the charter, that's where the money goes into a reserve fund to pay, I mean, it's really bound right up like that.
I'm just meaning what the legislative, what, what is their approval actually? Are they approving a project that you're funding or are they approving the ability for your municipality to have this type of tax?
I think it's the latter. I don't think the legislature necessarily cares.
So even if we had nothing planned, could we go before the legislature and say, "We would like this option that we may or may never use?"
Right, right.
That might be something to do just so that we have it, even if we...
Yeah, 'cause sometimes, 'cause I can tell you, I, I think that Middlebury is really an exception to the rule that, that their proceeds go specifically towards a project. I think typically it's used just to strictly offset property taxes, it just goes right into line item in the, you know, in their general fund and it's not project specific.
And that might be another consideration is if this, depending on how it was designed and built, is, you know, if, if a specific project such as the roof got done, you had reserve funds, that there either be a method of how people apply or groups who applied for special projects or it differs automatically if not being spent against something directly to the tax base.
I don't, I don't know much about how the, all the projects, I was under the impression that actually most of them were project-based.
I don't think so.
And that's how you got involvement, is, you know, the bridge especially I know about, but this is what we want, it is gonna cost this much money, it's gonna take this much time, do you approve it as opposed to, "We would like to take some money from you and use it for things."
Yeah.
Which is a lot harder to get the voters behind.
Yeah. It, I think Mel is correct, probably more of them use it to offset property taxes. I, I think it would be more prudent if we did it as to be more project-specific, which, which actually indirectly offsets property taxes because if you say, you know, "Look, we've got all these sidewalks that we've gotta repair." Well, let's, let's put that money towards doing sidewalks. Well, you know, we know we're gonna have to do the sidewalks, it would be otherwise coming out of tax money, it doesn't come out of tax money. So it's, it's kind of offsetting tax, it's, it's, it's indirectly offsetting tax money anyhow, even if you use it for a project unless it's a project that is really a kind of a wild, unusual kind of a project. You know, you could be, use it for...
Recreation areas, you could use it for a dog park.
Yeah, you could use it for all those things which you, we, we might end up doing at some point, but it would be all tax money and instead it's that money, so, so it, it could be really useful, but I, I would certainly recommend that it be more project-specific. It's too bad when we had money coming from Job Corps that, that was more, wasn't more project-specific 'cause it really slammed us when we didn't get the money anymore.
I, I, I do believe that it is a, it has to be in your charter, so like, you know, you do have to go through a charter change to have, to have that. So, I mean, obviously all of the charters are online, we could find out what the, it's pretty easy to find out what, what the language is in their charter. You could also find out what the voters voted on and you cannot assume that what's in their charter is exactly what they voted on because it goes to the legis, it goes to the legislature. Or we can, we can certainly gather that if that's what the council wants to see some other language.
So consensus, let's try to do some research and move, see where we move from here, not necessarily, we're gonna try to move forward, but not giving a specific direction, so.
I think we need to go review those out to, you know, business leaders in our community and see if there's gonna be the same amount of pushback that there was initially. I understand the culture, the climate outside of Virgence has changed, which may, may be more favorable now than it was at the first pass, but I would encourage that as conversation.
So, you know, the, there is a, there is a big difference to me between the two different types of taxes. For instance, room and meals is gonna hit all, you know, all of the restaurants are gonna charge that and the bed and breakfasts are gonna charge that, all right? No one else is gonna be paying that, that fee, all right? Sales and use is gonna be at all of us in the, in the community and the restaurants and, again, so, you know, to me, there's a, there, you know, they, it is only, I would assume it would be only one question from the voters, but your, but your clients, if you will, are, are very different. So I think to, you know, to me, you'd wanna talk to the restaurant people and see how they feel about it because the restaurant people might feel, absolutely, we want, you know, it's going in the side, I don't know what their reaction is gonna be. That's a, that's a very small set compared to the, the sales and use is everybody.
If you say it's, if you choose both, then are restaurants and housing or hotels getting hit twice then?
No, they don't get hit while they get, well, you know, they get hit, they're on their, you know, the, the tax on rooms, rooms and meals is one percent, all right? And then on their, on their, any sales or any purchases that they make would be subject to the one percent sales and use. So it's not like, it's not like two, it's not like it's two percent on the room.
Right.
They're two totally separate, it's one percent on the room and one percent on the book that they sold.
But if you, if you choose one of them, they get hit with one of the one percent. If you choose the other, they get hit with the other one percent.
Not really because the user, the user's paying the tax.
But they had to up their rates, so they might not have as many.
Why would they have to up their rates? Why would they have to up their rates? It's a tax that the user's paying.
Doesn't that change what the final bill is on your...
On the room and meals, they don't have to up their rates, on sales and use you do because that is, that's, they don't pay, the, the sales and use, like for instance, the, the inn that's paying their Green Mountain power bill, they're paying that themselves, all right? It's not a, client's not paying that.
Right.
The client's paying for the room.
Right.
So let me just ask this, so if you bought a car or you bought a house or you bought some major purchase, it's not four dollars?
So house, house is...
That's a sale.
A house is not subject to sales and use tax, a house is, a house is subject to property transfer tax. A car is, is not sales and use, that's a different tax, you know, so.
So those kinda things are not considered a sales tax?
It's not, no, no.
We did, the last time we did this, which wasn't all that long ago, the, we did run numbers on potentially what people would have to pay. It, the one percent really, truly is minuscule.
Right.
No one, unless you told them it was there, you wouldn't even notice it. No one, unless you told them it was there, you wouldn't even notice it, really. But, you know, there's psychological things that go on when you're, when you're raising a tax.
When you talk about taxes, everybody's ears perk up.
Of course, if you have to get voter permission, then you kind of have to tell them.
Oh, yeah, no, you have to, no, you have to tell them that. But, but what I'm saying is that part of what we studied the last time was, well, if we're going to take us to the voters, we, we need to tell them how it affects them. So we had to run these numbers of, you know, how it would affect them, and it's really miniscule.
Mark, are you in favor of kind of re, doing some more additional research?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not opposed to it.
No, I'm just trying to figure, get the feeling if anybody's really against trying to move this in, in any direction. Like they hear it now, so that we just don't go off on a witch hunt. Ms. Lynn?
I don't have any problem with studying it at all.
Yeah, because I, it's, talk to somebody, Jeff?
I'd like more information.
Well, okay, Mel, can I give me some hints as to what would be the next step? And we don't have to do that right now?
No.
And, and maybe one or two of us could go and talk to some of the businesses and, and get a feel. But we ought to, so we don't double up on anybody. We ought to know who's going where, if somebody's going to talk to somebody in particular. So, okay, so we're going to get off that point. Because I know Mel's got some stuff here that we got to deal with. Enough said on that, sewer rate increase, Mel?
So I handed out at the meeting, two pieces of paper. One being a sheet that looks like what you'd normally see for the budget. And let me just tell you that this next year budget, all that I did, I did not deal with employee salaries. I didn't really do with a heck, a heck of a lot with anything. Other than some of the areas in the budget that we, that we, to me, are, are not funding properly under the current budget. And that is sewer line replacement. I can tell you, I should have brought my fund eight, my fund eight to you. But one of the areas of, of getting rid of this infiltration is to continue to replace clay tile lines. And I can tell you that as of today, we only have about thirty-eight thousand dollars in that fund. And really, that, it just doesn't go very far. So you'll notice under sewer line replacement, to increase that from twenty thousand to fifty thousand dollars, what I'm talking about is next fiscal year. I will tell you that we currently have sixty-eight thousand dollars in the capital improvement fund. And we have not been putting any money in there. All of our sewer connection fees go into that pot. We are in the process of replacing the furnace, but we don't have anything else planned. But, you know, if a, if we have to replace a pump, we would be using that, a portion of that sixty-eight thousand dollar fund. We have the last payment of the bond, I included that in your agenda packet, is November one, two thousand and twenty-two. So we've got, we've just got a few years left here, five more years to, to pay. And, you know, I, you could, you know, you could put money into the capital improvement fund. But, you know, the other option is just to wait until that bond is paid off and then begin really putting money into that fund. The, on the revenue, on the revenue side, in the center column, you'll notice that the revenues, projected revenue of six hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. And there was another, the second sheet Joan put together, there, just so you know, lots of times when I say Joan, you know, she'll say like, can you, you want me to put a spreadsheet together? And I say, yeah, good idea, put a spreadsheet together. And I apologize this for her, she and I live in this world of books. And so like Joan and I know what we're talking about, about book. And you're saying the city council doesn't know what's book one, book, what does book have to do with this? So let me explain what this means. Book two, book two is our measured users. So this is how we bill sewer. We have, I'm going to say, we send out seven hundred bills that are on an equivalent user basis. So everybody in the room here that owns a house, they get a bill every quarter for ninety-six dollars. That's your flat rate bill, ninety-six bucks. If you have a three-family dwelling, then it's three times ninety-six, that's your bill. If you have an office building with two offices in it, and you don't use very much water, it's two units, ninety-six bucks per unit. We also have a book, book two is the measured users. And what that is, is that any commercial, the way the ordinance is written, is any commercial unit that we expect will use more than six thousand gallons per month of water is billed sewer on the measured user basis. And so every month, Maria at the water district sends Joan and I a predetermined list. We studied this a number of years ago, you know. If you have like a office, you don't, like Lynn, your office, you don't use squat for water down there, okay? But if you're a, if you were the car wash, all right, now we're talking about some water. So we analyzed all of the commercial units a long time ago, Joan. And when I first came back to work here, I think, is what I, when I first came back to work in two thousand and eight, we analyzed all these commercial units and located all those units that have a history of using more than six thousand gallons per month. And the city council amended the ordinance whereby sewer is charged for commercial users with a history of using more than six thousand gallons of water per month or billed on the measured user basis. On top of that, Northland's Job Corps and UTC is billed by taking a look at their metered sewer, comparing that to the water. And if they use more, if there's more sewer flow based on what goes through UTC's sewer monitoring, metering vault, or in the case of Northland's, the, the Northland's Job, the Job Corps pump station, we're able to, to compare actual sewer flow against water usage. And in the case of Northland's, half of the time, due to rain and snow melt, there's more flow that they put into the system than they use in water from the Virgin's Pan Water District. And the way that the ordinance is written, they pay the higher of the two amounts. And so that's why when you see book two, you see that, that, you see how book one is very stable? You know, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, that's then a little bit more, that's, you know, Peter Kahn built two houses. That's why you see, you know, you don't see a heck of a lot of movement there. But you do see some volatility in book two. And that's because of what I just explained, that, you know, the seasonality of the car wash, all right? You know, you know, can move those numbers. I can tell you just by looking at that report, I can guarantee you that September was one wet September. That's predominantly Northland's Job Corps is the result of that. So, anyway, so the point is, is that we are only billing out six hundred and fifty-two dollars, sixty, six hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars a year against the current budget of six hundred and eighty thousand two hundred, which would push us into an eighteen thousand dollar deficit. We ended FY seventeen with about ten thousand dollars in the fund balance. And so if we do nothing with the rates, we would project to end the year eight thousand dollars in the hole. So one option is to do nothing and push the problem out to budget time and deal with rates then. Another option is to deal with it tonight to increase rates. Joan is going to be doing her billing on the, yeah, by the sixteenth of October. So she'll probably do it based on, regardless of whether you do nothing with the rate or change the rate, she's going to do billing. So I can tell you that the seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars is what we would, that would be the revenue if we raised the rates from ninety-six dollars per quarter to a hundred and six dollars per quarter. Obviously, the measured rate, you know, we would adjust those accordingly. It's just a mathematical, mathematical formula. Now, if, so if you look at the current year, if you were to institute this now, the difference between the seven twenty and the six fifty-two, you would then multiply that times seventy-five percent and would clearly get us out of the, you know, get us out of the projected red. Now Lynn, you, you mentioned, you know, you know, about deferring, you know, waiting a little bit. You know, I can tell you, I, you know, you know, we're not in the hole, we're not in the hole today. We're heading in the hole. You know, I, I guess the question is, you know, should we increase rates now? Or should we wait another three months and increase them then?
I've changed my mind. I, I think we should move ahead. I think it's, we need to, we need to do this. It's only delaying the inevitable. But I also think, after your meeting last time, and I can sympathize with it because we just put in a brand-new septic system based on baby wipes and sanitary wipes that just plugged our whole system. So I think we have to educate people to stop putting those down the toilet would be number one. But say, if you continue to do this, it's going to raise the rates even higher. And I think there's got to be twofold. And I thought maybe we could put it in the letter, anything else that might be going through the system that isn't dissolving the way it should be? And just educate people, say, if this continues, if you continue to do this, the rates will have to continue to go up. And if we, if we could get half the people to stop doing it, we'll be that much ahead. So I'll make the motion to up the rate to a hundred and six dollars a quarter with an education brochure to put in the next bill, if Joan has time. And if not, to the next one, to the, whatever, the next one or the following one.
I'll second that. Motion made by Lynn, second by Matt. Further discussion? Ready? Just, ready and another, you?
Yeah, I don't know whether you've done this calculation, but, so how long do you think we might last?
Right.
At going, I mean, we're running, raising it by ten, ten dollars per quarter? And, I mean, is that going to, I know you don't have a crystal ball, but I mean, you know, is that going to keep us on the straight and narrow?
What is the bond? The last, so, yeah, we, we make the last bond payment November one, two thousand and twenty-two.
I thought at the last meeting, we had asked you to project out what would the rate need to be to get us without having to raise it again for five years.
I thought that was a hundred and six.
Is that the hundred and six?
Yes.
Okay.
That'll do it?
Well, you know, I mean, yeah, I'm, you know, one of the things I, I, you know, one of the things, Lynn, I think that you're absolutely right, that we need to educate people to, to not putting, you know, when it's, you know, I, I think it's, there's a labeling problem out there. They say something is flushable. Well, you know, I could flush a football down my toilet, that's not the brightest thing to do. But, but anyway, the problem, the problem, you know, I mean, Andy, I really appreciate the, the articles that you did and, and the, particularly the picture, not my picture, but the picture of the, of that pump and the rags, okay? I mean, I'm telling you, I'm just so convinced that, that, you know, how much, how much could we possibly been pumping through that pump? I mean, I, I mean, really, I mean, I just got to believe that, that these overflows, now that we've got them measured and now we know that the worst one that we encountered was three hundred and thirty-two thousand. You know, when you got, when you got two lagoons with four million gallons over there, you know, you know, maybe if that, that, maybe we could have been ready for that and got that flow over there and it would have been, it would have been fine. Point being is, is that, is that, I, I think you're, I think you're right, Lynn. But I also think that we're going to have to do something to the McDonough Drive pump station to catch those rags before they get to the pump. And I, so I think we're going to have to hit it from both ends, and we need money to do that.
I think that's part of that grant I'm going to be shooting for.
Well, we haven't, haven't got to that yet. But anyway, you know, one of the things, you know, what I don't know is, is relative to the capital, I mentioned that I only have sixty-eight thousand dollars in that fund. We're replacing the furnace, but we're, so that's, I don't know how much we're going to need to do some improvements to the McDonough Drive pump station. I don't have a handle on that. So that's the, that crystal ball, you know, I, I can't, I can't tell you that.
And so we, we would know that by budget time though, right?
Yeah, I hope so, yeah, yeah. And I'll tell, let me just tell you one thing. And I know, I know that you, you know, you, you know, you don't use, you don't tend to use water tower money for sewer. But I, but I can tell you, you know, it's, it's money, you know, that it's an eligible project. It's a capital improvement project, you know.
Bob, you had something, sir?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. How are we doing with our delinquent sewer tax collection? What is that number currently? It was around thirteen grand plus and less. How are we now?
So I can, I don't give you, I can't give you the exact number, but I explained, Lynn asked me that same question last meeting. And so let me just tell you that, let's just say that it's, today, it's twenty-two thousand dollars. Let's just say that that's the number. Let me just tell you that from an accounting standpoint, our auditors allow us to count delinquent sewers at one hundred percent of their value. So it, it is that receivable. So it, so the, the, those twenty-two thousand dollars, if we collected it, we would be in no different position financially. Cash flow, yes, but it would not, it's not like it would add twenty-two thousand to the, to the fund because it's regarded as an asset.
Isn't it revenue? It's money coming into the city for services provided, no more, no less than the water provided? Used water, you pay for the water. You don't pay for it, you don't get the water.
Yeah, well, anyway, the way that we collect sewer is, the way that we collect sewer is no different than the way we collect taxes. If somebody is behind in their sewer, we put them up for tax sale, that's what we do, you know, so.
I was intrigued by an article that I read in one of the local tabloids last month regarding the grant application, eight thousand dollars. And that was kind of an iffy thing. If we don't get it from, if we don't get the grant, then we're going to have to go to an alternate source. We'll find the money somewhere, which kind of piqued the question. What were your thoughts regarding the somewhere else, the other option? If you don't get the grant for the eight thousand dollars, did you study that you're just referring to regarding the sewer system? What are your thoughts on that?
So you're jumping ahead to item six D. So, so, so one of the things, so first off, just to be clear, you know, you know, the, we will, the twenty-two thousand dollars, we will go after that money, but I can just, just tell you that from accounting, it doesn't matter. You know, and I will, you know, you know, and I don't, we want everybody to pay. We actually charge one percent per interest, one percent interest on outstanding sewer. So actually, it's the best investment that we have, to be honest with you. So it's, it's really okay. But I'm not encouraging people to not pay their bills because we, we do need, do need cash flow. But I'm going to report on D in a, in a second.
I did have one other follow-on to that article that I just referred to. It was the article before that. It had to do with when you folks were juggling budget numbers and preparing the city budget. There was a comment in there that I didn't quite pick up on. It required, it was in regard to tax exemptions. Who, what classification of personnel, of taxpayers is exempt from paying which taxes?
Okay, so.
How's that work?
So first off, everybody pays sewer, except for the city doesn't bill itself, all right? Relative to taxation, you know, schools don't pay property taxes.
What about veterans exemption? Veterans exemption, that's kind of where I was going.
Oh, that's okay, so that's what you're talking about? Veterans exemption is that a qualified veteran can receive up to forty thousand dollar reduction in their assessment in their assessment in determining their, the calculation of their tax bill.
That's property taxes.
Property taxes, yeah, yeah.
But, but that exemption doesn't apply to any other tax levied by the city?
That's correct.
Water or like sewer tax or whatever.
That's correct.
Okay, that was the question that I had.
Yeah.
Because in your, in your comments, in the article, I forget who wrote the article, but it was one of you all, anyway, who submitted it. It said that allowances had to be made for veterans exemptions. And now I understand that the allowance.
Oh, that's only on the property tax side.
Had to do with property.
When you, when you, when you, you, when you get your magnifying glass out and with your property tax bill when you get home tonight, you will see a point oh oh three seven rate on your property tax bill. And what that rate is, is that small rate, point oh oh three six, or whatever it is, multiplied times the grand list generates enough money in education taxes. There's a forty thousand dollars that I just mentioned to you. The way that it works is ten thousand is grandfathered, thirty thousand has, can, is recaptured by the state of Vermont. So what happens is, is those ten or twelve veterans that have that exemption, we calculate that, take the thirty thousand, multiply it times the education rate that they normally would have paid, and we have to capture that money from that local rate. Also, we, there is a voter exemption for the rescue squad and a voter exemption for the odd fellows hall. The rescue squad, they do not recapture that money, but they do recapture the money for the odd fellows hall. That's what that, that's what that little rate is about.
Oh, that's what that, thanks.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're getting off track here a little bit, and I want to pull this back because.
Okay, thank God it was ahead.
But if there's additional information that needs to be done, please feel free to stop by, but it's these type of questions, Bob, that we need. And that's where, at the beginning of the meeting, if, if you have issues where it calls for citizens' comment, that would be a good point for those questions to be asked. But thank you.
Okay, so, so we have that motion on the floor, right?
We have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so, so what comes in my mind is, what would, what would the citizens like more? Would it be better to go up by essentially forty dollars for the year in their rates and not do anything for five years? Or go up by half that amount and go a couple of years and then raise it again, because that way they get a twenty dollar impact? There are some communities that actually you do their sewer rates like their regular budget, and every year, they look at the budget, they look at the sewer rate. Is it doing fine? Is it not doing fine? And they adjust it basically annually if, if necessary. So we've got all of those options. I'm, I'm, I like the idea, and, and the last time we raised sewer rates, I was manager, it took a big jump. But the, the sewer budget and the sewer revenue, it was deeply in the hole. And that was the only way we were gonna be able to crawl out of it. I, I'm half thinking that, I'm not so sure that I wanna stick forty bucks increase all in one year on the sewer rate payers, when if we do half of that, it presumably will get us a few years down the road, and then we adjust it again, knowing that we're gonna adjust it again. We don't know whether our financial circumstances with the sewer plant will change at all, but.
The, the thing that Mel was tasked with was to give us a five-year window.
Right.
And, and your point, your point is very good, Rennie, but just, he was tasked with that, so if we're looking at other options, now, now's the point of discussion.
I would prefer that we just bite the bullet and we put it to rest. In the end, it really is only forty dollars. And that, that forty dollars could become eighty dollars in two years if we don't do some advanced planning. And I think if we just bite the bullet now, we're gonna find ourselves well ahead of any other problems. I, I'm very embarrassed that we have to revisit this after having just raised the rates anyway in the last eight months or whatever it was.
I think it was a year, but that's okay.
Okay.
What was the rate last?
Eighty-seven fifty.
Eighty-seven fifty. I'm, I'm embarrassed that we're having to address it, and I would rather put it to bed for five years, personally.
I think the salesmanship of this is it's ten dollars a quarter.
Right.
You know, that's what it is.
Right.
Any other comments?
I hate to say it, I don't think ten percent's gonna do it, because if we were ninety-seven fifty a year ago, or ninety-six now, which is essentially ten percent, I don't see that a ten percent jump now is gonna push us five years.
But as I recall, Mel told us eight months ago, or a year ago, it wasn't gonna get us through.
Right.
And there was a couple of votes that led us to have this interim measure. But the guidance we're getting now is that this will get us through the five-year period.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying that you're never gonna re, you know.
No, it's a projection.
Yeah.
I just.
Your, your, your fear for all that you're not gonna make it to the five years.
Yeah, we did a ten percent jump in, a year ago, and we're eight thousand in the hole. We're gonna do a ten percent jump. I don't see that that's gonna get us five years. I mean, I think it's, we need to jump something, but I don't think we're gonna get, I think we're gonna be two, two and a half years down even with the ten percent and having to revisit this.
Is there anything Mel that substantiate smirks? Is there anything that you know that would substantiate smirks concern?
Well, there is, you know, some of these numbers, you know, I mean, sure, I could, I could make a spreadsheet with a million columns of things. This is just the way that I attacked it, all right?
I'm not, not gonna.
No, and I'm, and what I'm, what I'm saying is, is that can, can, you know, I, I do feel that the city council can maintain a budget of seven hundred and eighteen thousand dollars a year, all right? Now, how are you gonna do, how are you gonna do that, all right? Well, number one, some of the, the wages are gonna go up. The, the electricity, I have there at eighty thousand dollars, and I really feel that we're a little high on electricity because of the relationship with the solar panel. If you noticed, the, two years ago, it was sixty-five, all right? I, I wrote eighty because that's what we spent last year. I really don't think, I think that number is too high. Down under sewer line maintenance repair, that fifteen thousand dollars, that is because we have been doing a lot, a lot more sewer cleaning this year and, and next year because of Vermont gas. That's why we're, we're having to locate all of these lines, and if we're gonna locate them, we're gonna flush them out, and we've been paying that bill. So we're not talking about replacement, we're just talking about sewer line maintenance, you know, clean, cleaning lines. So that fifteen thousand dollars, I don't think that is needed. So the eighty isn't needed for five years, the fifteen thousand isn't needed for five years. The sewer line replacement, you know, I don't know what the right number is, Mark, forty thousand, fifty thousand, twenty thousand, whatever it is, it is. What I'm, so, and wages, we are gonna spend more money in wages over the next five years. I, I started to do the spreadsheet, started to project increases, and why don't I just not project anything and just say, just keep in mind that the wages are gonna go up? So I really, I do feel that the city council can, you're, I can, if you, if you do, if the city council does proper budgeting and, and sticks to it, I think that this can make it five years on fumes, okay, all right? And then when you get, and then that bond will be paid off, and you really should be fine, all right? You know, I, 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 I hear you. But you are, the city council is in control of some of these numbers. You know, I mean, like Jimmy and I, we don't do, we don't replace sewer, sewer lines with no money. There has to be money in the sewer line replacement fund to replace a line, so, and we're just not out there, you know, Christmas shopping on as to which line gets replaced. But also, you're soon gonna get, you're gonna get this result of this sewer line study, all right? So the crystal ball, Rennie, is actually gonna be a little clearer here when we get the result of this study, so we then will know really how much clay tile is left out in this community, and how many years it's gonna take us, so, you know, I mean, sure.
There's a lot of clay tile behind my house.
I know, I know. So, you know, I, you know, I'm not gonna, I think, I think the city, you know, I think the city council can, over, can, over the next five years, maintain that rate. I think that they can.
I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
No.
We have one, two, three, four, five, six in favor, one in not in favor.
I'm sure that Mark was gonna vote no.
No, I'm voting yes. I'm just saying, I think we're gonna be talking about this in two or three years.
Because I was thinking that you would vote no, because you felt it should be higher. Why did you vote no because it should be lower?
Well, I don't think it should be higher, because I think that would be too much of a shock, but it is not gonna be surprised if whatever council is sitting here in two or three years is gonna be saying, we need more money.
Lynn, F1.
I wanna quickly make this comment, and I wanna thank Mel publicly for helping us out on this. But by an accident of nature, we found out that one of our houses that's being sold, their line crosses behind another person's house. And the lawyer considered that a title defect because there was no easement for that line.
That we could find.
That we could find. And it doesn't, in my opinion, this is only my opinion, my opinion is, because of this document that I gave you, there doesn't need to be an easement, and I don't wanna send the presidents of having to have an easement to go and fix a sewer line that crosses someone else's property. I think this section fourteen is very clear that the sewer lines, no matter whose property they're on, are owned by the public authority or the city of virgins. So this woman that crosses, Mel has got her permission to give an easement, but I don't feel that we should be getting into the business of getting easements for sewer lines that cross private property. And my office is a great example. We have three or four people all going into one sewer plant, and if somebody's sewer line above me broke, I would of course want them to fix it. But they don't, I don't want to have to have, sign an easement, or I don't wanna have to call a lawyer and say, you know, should I do this? Or in this, the case that I have, they wanted money. So that's not fair to, you know, these systems have been in there for a hundred years or whatever it's been. And I just, I want to make sure that we're all on the same page on this, and that we're clear that we don't necessarily have to have an easement that's already in the ground for a sewer line that's on a private property but needs to be repaired.
Mel, I'm gonna lean on your wisdom as to, do we have to have a motion, a vote, or what do we have to do here to, you know, or is, is everybody in favor of what Lynn is asking for? Does everybody agree with section four, fourteen, I mean, as it's written here? And where does this document reside anyways?
Well, this is, this is, this is in the definition section of our sewer ordinance.
So it already exists in, in one of our documents.
So I, 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 I have talked to Jim Womet about this, just, you know, kind of briefly, and he actually ended up, he had a conflict of, he had a conflict of interest because he was involved with, with both houses, the sale of the houses. But I think that I have not gotten back to him on this, because I really, in working with, with Mike and the people, I, I really felt that instead of me spending more and more hours searching, it's like what I tell people, I don't mind looking for a needle in a haystack, as long as I know there's one in there. I'm gonna get it, get it. But anyway, I, I, so I spent a lot of time trying to find something, which I don't, I don't think it's there, because that's just not the way that business was conducted back in nineteen oh five, all right? But the point is, is that somebody's sewer line goes over somebody else's property. You know, I, it would be great if, if, if there was something crystal clear in our ordinances that showed that really, that, that they, that when that occurs, you, you really do have those rights and it can be repaired. You shouldn't have to go, shouldn't have to go back and, and have an easement, you know? It should already be in place. I don't know whether or not that, you know, whether or not Womet interprets that to have that, but, you know, what I think Lynn is getting at is sometimes these kinds of things halt the sale of a piece of property at no fault of their own. I mean, they, they bought a piece of property that's been hooked up to the city sewer for a hundred years. So I don't, I don't know.
Rennie?
Well, I guess my question, and it's more of a legal question, is whether the city even has the authority to say that that shall be the case on public, on, on private property? I mean, when a sewer line is laid across private property, and granted, in those days, they didn't, you know, go through the formality of having easements and all of that stuff, but it's still a private line across private property. And I'm not so sure that we have the authority to say that those are okay now, and you've got rights if your line does that on, on somebody else's property. I, I really question whether legally we can even do that. I, I mean, I have, I have the same, I have the same case, not with my, my personal sewer, but there are private lines that cross my line, my property. To get to the sewer, and when one of them broke, the person said, can I go on your property and dig to fix it? And I said, sure. I mean, I, there was no easement, but I think I probably could have said, no, you can't, too bad. Or, or pay me a thousand dollars for getting on my property.
So here's, here's my argument of why I think we need to take a position hard on this. And that is, when the water lines were put in, it was more modern day. So easements were granted for people to pass the water on the, you know, if it was on their private property. You had, there's indeeds, there's water easements, there's telephone poles, when there was telephone poles, and there's electric easements that are indeeds. There's nothing, it's never addressed in a sewer thing, and that's because this is so old. And to, to force anybody, I mean, the only reason this happened is we were checking to see if there was a clay line. It's the only reason we knew it. Nobody is going to go and spend having someone, this was, this cost them five hundred dollars to go and find out what this line was, and then have a neighbor who initially said, no, you're not going to be able to do this. That's not right. And to have a buyer or a seller have to take on the responsibility of buying a neighbor out? I mean, there, in this case, it's only one, but it could have been four houses. You know, we have to, as a city, say, this is our lines. Yes, we're not gonna pay for it, which it says in this, by the way, if you wanna go read this hand-piped thing, that we're not responsible for the cost of it, but it is a public sewer line. It just happens to pass through private property, as all of the utilities do. So I'm not sure why sewer is any different than water, electricity, cable, whatever it's going to be.
So this is a, this is a public sewer that's on private property?
Well, it, I don't know if you would call it public.
You wanna classify something as it leaves the house to when it hooks up. Once it leaves the house, you're calling it public, because it's a public utility. You want the sewage to go somewhere else.
No, it's, no, I don't say that. I'm just saying that you would have the right by, by this, what I interpret this to mean, to fix your sewer line if it broke and you had to go on to another, a neighbor's property to fix it. You shouldn't have to pay them for the easement, and you shouldn't have to have an easement paper to do it. And if, you know, if we were to really know where all our sewer lines are, and I guess we do now, is there's probably, I would guess, more than half the properties are encroached by someone else's sewer line. Why, why would we put people in, in the position of having to buy the easement or to be denied going on to the property?
Well, I, I agree with you. If, if we can grant that relief, my, my question is whether legally we can grant the relief, because it is private, it's a private line on private property. I don't, I don't know whether the city even has the authority to grant that relief.
But what I'm saying is, according to section fourteen, that's already in the sewer regulation. But what I'm saying is, according to Section 14, that's already in the sewer regulations. So I just don't want to start something that says, okay, we'll, we'll get this easement for this one house when all of us here might have that same issue someday.
We...
But, but that line is not...
We, we don't own the line.
No.
We do own the main sewer line. I read that as a possibility, I could be reading it wrong, as we own the authority to go in and do anything to ours, but we, it doesn't say anything about Lynn connecting to our sewer line.
Right. That, that public line is, I mean, the public authority does not have any control over...
No, it doesn't become public until, it's private, until it connects to ours, which is public.
But it also says that an abutting property would have equal rights and is controlled by a, a public authority.
So it's saying, which means a sewer to which all owners of a budding property have equal rights. So they're saying equal rights to that sewer. There are no equal rights to this. If, if I have a line going from my house, crossing my neighbor's yard and getting to the main line, my neighbor does not have any rights to my line. They have equal rights to the line I'm connecting to. They can't hook into my sewer line.
No.
But they can hook into the main line that all the neighbors are abutting to. And that's, I think that's the equal rights that's being referred back to, meaning a sewer.
This is, it's a legal question.
Yeah, I mean, we need an answer.
And I think we can't just leave it like this. We have to tend to it so that, first of all, our sale is probably going to have an easement, but I think that that's asking future buyers and sellers to take on a responsibility, I don't think was there. Nobody, nobody living today put those sewer lines in and said, oh, you can't fix them.
I, I think we have, like everybody's saying, is we, we need to get a, a legal opinion from somebody other than this council to make the proper decision so that we make the right, take the right action. So I, I don't think we can resolve this tonight. And I'm, I don't know who the legal party would be to approach and, and get the legal response, but I think that's the direction that we really need to head in because we're just going to keep bantering it back and forth and...
Can we keep it on the agenda and look for a legal...
Yeah, yeah, we can put it on the agenda and, and meanwhile, we'll, I'll talk to Mel and see who we might be able to...
Well, just, I think our situation, if, if, if she's still agreeing to the easement, might be okay for right now. But what I'm saying, let's not continue this.
Right, no.
So I don't, I, I have no problem with Jim Womet saying, this is how you can proceed, even though he represented both buyers and sellers of all these houses. I don't have a pro, I don't think that's a conflict for him to do that and he's our city attorney.
Well, at, at any rate, he can do it on a generic basis.
That's what I mean, right.
You know, if you have this situation, what can the city do?
Is this public, is this private? If it's private, can the city do anything like changing the deeds? But we don't know, we need that help.
All right, so we'll, we'll put it on the next agenda. All right, sewage board, is there anything that you can report or...
Just, just that I'm in the process of writing it. I've got it partially written. It's a lot more complex than I thought it would be because of all the research I have to do to, to try and find something that will fit for us. But the only thing that maybe the council may want to comment on is that right now, I'm doing it as an, as an ordinance amendment. So it would be Chapter 6, which is street sidewalks and parks, is, is where I'm trying to sandwich this in as an ordinance amendment. But we can also take care of it as purely a policy. And I, and so I'm not sure what is the best way to do it. It could be just a policy that we have about these signs or do it in ordinance. But I'm writing it right now as an ordinance amendment.
So we don't have to make a decision tonight?
No, not unless everybody says, no, we'd rather have it as a policy, you know?
We'll, we'll let it slide over through until the next meeting and try to bring closure at that meeting. All right, city managers' report.
So you do have an updated budget report. It's, it's still a little early and in the interest of time, I'm going to skip right over to B, all right? Reserving dock space for cruise ship, I copied, I gave a copy of the email exchange and if you would like, Chris Peck would like to speak to the city council. So if, if folks are interested in hearing his proposal, I'd be happy to invite him to an upcoming meeting.
He sounds good.
Okay. Traffic study portion of North Street as one-way street. You saw the email exchange I had with Adam, so, so timing is everything and in this instance, it was not good. You know, I, I have not done anything since the last, since the last meeting. I do feel that we do need to improve some signage because when you're on the, when you are traveling north on North Street, there's really, I'm sorry, when you're traveling south on North Street, there really is no indication to tell you that you can't turn left on Park Street. So we've got to, and there are some options as to what type of signage can occur there. So that needs to be done. I, you know, I, I drive, I drive that route all, all the time. I do think that we do need to continue to pay attention to tree, the tree limbs. As you're coming out from North Street onto Main Street, there is a couple of trees there to the left that we need to keep track of to...
Is that there right away?
One of them isn't, I don't know, I'd have to look at, I know it's, there's one that's on their lawn, but it, but it might be, but, so there is some trimming that could occur there. I will tell you that the backside of, of North Street, the backside of the park, I, I always drive that way because I go to, go that way to go to the lake. It's kind of weird the way it works because really it is a one-lane road back there. And, but you never, I've never gone head to head with anybody. You always come to that intersection and, and if there's a car on there, you just, you just wait, okay? So it's a really funky situation. So anyway, I don't know, I don't know what you, what you, what you want to do with this. You know, there really is no accident history. Lots of times traffic studies are the result of, there's been some accidents and you have a, you have a, you've got to do a study, you've got to do something, but I...
In the interest of time, would people mind if we just moved this to the next agenda, put it up in a, put it back in the action film or...
Sure.
Sure.
In the meantime, you'll figure out signage?
Yeah, I'm going to figure, I mean, right now, I mean, really, I've got to have a no-left turn and the problem, the problem, there should be one there and I looked at where it could go and I can tell you, it's, it's like, man, I don't really want to put it in front of Marcia's house. It's, it's a little, I'm just telling you. So it's a little, I, I think that what we might end up doing is actually putting a one-way sign on the, on the other side of the street, you know, on the park, you know, or...
Or do not enter.
I, I don't think they can see it, Rennie, that's the problem. Anyway, we've got to get something to tell people, don't be, don't be turning left on a, on a park street. We'll, we'll, we'll figure that out, okay? And relative to study, we can, we can, we'll put that on the next agenda. Municipal planning grant sewer system, what I, I, I really fully intended to get an application in until I got to looking at the details. And municipal planning grants are eligible to study sewer-type things, but you have to get your, you have to get your project, your planning project approved by A and R before you can submit it to the Agency of, of Natural Resources. So there was no way that I was going to get that approved, you know, get that planning project approved by the, by the October 2 deadline. So I, I didn't apply for that. So anyway, that's, you know, I will tell you that, I, I will tell you that I want to continue to move forward with looking at alternative improvements to McDonough Drive. I mean, I can, you know, I can contact engineers and get, you know, get some information because I really think that there's, you know, I don't need to wait around for a grant. We can just get some...
Well, let, let's talk because there may be some other sources that, that are still in contention that we might be able to get some money.
Okay, all right.
That's my other question, is there, are there other sources we might find similar money?
So my, my other topics of interest, Melissa, Melissa, yeah, I sent it to Rennie. So got a letter, Melissa dropped a letter off, said, dear Mr. Holly, congratulations on your project's successful application for funding to the 2017 Vtrans bicycle and pedestrian program. Your project was approved for $37,500 for rectangular rapid flashing beacons.
Nice.
Yeah.
That's great, Mel.
Well, actually, that is great. It's really, this is, this is really a Rennie, Amy, Shannon hagget. I, I did proofreading on this thing and I think I hit the send button, all right? But anyway, that's, that's good. Good, thank you.
Okay.
That's it for me.
Thank you. I'll make it as brief as possible. Truck, truck traffic through Virginia. We had a meeting, Jeff, Rennie, Mel and myself, we're at today. It's just the, the only reason I was there today is I'm the new guy on the block and the other people were part of a previous meeting setup. So we're, we're talking. There is no silver bullet for truck traffic through Virginia. So there's going to be some other meetings and we'll try to keep you posted as to kind of what's happening in those meetings because I don't want to give you any directions because we really don't have a set direction yet. But there is talk. We are back at the table and we're starting to schedule more meetings. So some more talk will happen. Pumpkins in the park. Some citizens have got together and they want to have pumpkins in the park on October 8th, uh, 28th. And more details will follow and we'll put it out on front porch for them once they have a chance to meet. Next meeting is October 24th and...
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Motion made by, I'll second by. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, be quiet.